And we are unmuted.
Yeah.
Councilor Corrigan, can you hear us?
Just now can, yes.
Thank you. And you're ready?
Yes.
Thank you. Roger.
All set.
Great City Council meeting to order on Wednesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M for the city of Yamahill. May I get a roll call, please? Of the year. We charge here. Hi, here. Adean here.
Corrigan here.
And please stand for the flag. By the legions to the land of the United States of America. And to the reality, we would say one nation, I'm looking at individuals with a career in justice for all. All right, let's open up for public comments. Do we have anybody here for public comment? Please.
Patty Perrin, two one five, North Baker Street. I just have a quick question and I know that everybody up here at City Hall is busy. But I've sent two different emails, one of which I wanted to speak at the water meeting, which generally you have the chance to anyway. But I wanted to be put on the agenda. I sent my email on the twenty-first and the meeting was on the twenty-fifth. And then the second email that I sent was on, this was April. The second email I sent was on April twenty-fourth requesting just a ballpark idea of when the audio would be posted from the April twelfth meeting. And I've not received a response to either one of them.
Okay, thank you very much. Any, anything else?
No.
Anybody else for public comment? Anybody online for public comment, please raise your hand and unmute yourself. At this time, seeing no raised hands and no unmuted comments, we will continue. And we will go ahead and close the public comment. And move on to agenda updates or additions by city administrators.
Yes, tonight, Your Honor, I've got a couple of changes for you. We are moving the email from Jayden Maxfield from information in your packet and removing it to new business item B to be discussed by council. In your informational section, you have a note from Terrence Mar, letting you know of his decision to retire. With your permission, I would like to add new business item C, which is an approval of an IPA between Lori Corculius, and I think I probably messed up that name, and City of Yamahill for her services as your new municipal project. You have a copy of the contract on your table in the folders that I provided for you at the beginning of the meeting. I would also like to add item D under new business. It is a request for a special event permit from Jay Dis Brown. I think that's his name. If I might pick up qualities representing in Commendville and the radio. They'd like to spend up in evenings in our part if we can discuss that that time. Also on your desk is an email stream from Mary Camerata, letting council know that the work to raise the gas station will not start until June fifth due to some timing issues. But P G E, the information has been posted to our website. So those are my requested changes to the agenda.
Thank you, sir. And for the consenting, is there any questions or anything that you would like to be pulled out from the session writer?
I don't see the motion.
Yes.
I make the motion to approve it.
Maybe both, please.
Adean, second.
Thank you. And both.
Okay.
We charge. Potter, I.
Adean, I.
Corrigan, I.
And presentation and public hearings. We have a public hearing this evening for the twenty twenty-three budget approved by the Budget Committee on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. And I'll turn it over to our Budget Officer for the public hearing.
At this point, add with the L B one, which is required, has been posted appropriately with appropriate time. The document is being reviewed by the Budget Committee and approved. So at this point, I guess I'm open to any questions that may be had. Because all I need is for you to open the public hearing, hear comments, and at that point, close the public hearing. There is no requirement or action that seems, it's just the hearing.
So at this time, we'll open public hearing for public comment. We'll go, we'll start with the, anybody with concerns or names for the budget? And then we'll go into people that are or pro budget as a anybody that has any concerns or or names for other budgets and that's them. A quick question.
Did something change from the time that it was originally posted online? Let me back up for a minute. I originally posted, there is a column on the right-hand side where all of the the meetings and all that kind of, so I printed it from there. But then somebody asked me to print it for them, so I went to, if you scroll down where the announcements and that kind of thing are, I printed it from there. And there is a considerable difference in the amount of pages with the two documents. So which one would be correct?
Which one is this one that you are considering?
That one, I believe, is from the smaller one.
Okay, this is the one that was posted in the newspaper for public review. The other one, and this one outlines its summary of the budget. So we won't detail it.
Your Honor. I think is what you saw is the original posting was for the proposed budget.
Okay.
And the one with the larger number is the one that the Budget Committee reviewed and approved. So you're probably comparing proposed to the included.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Lawson.
I'd like to, like to validate the, the number just to make sure that I have it straight. And the number that I have, which is, which, as I understand, it should be the final total number for the budget, which is six million, three hundred eighty thousand, five hundred eighty-five dollars. With, is that correct?
That's the number I have also.
Okay, so I do have a question relative to it. And so this would be, my understanding, this would be the third budget proposal and the one that had been approved.
Your Honor.
So from the very beginning.
So if I may add to your question, at the beginning of the process, meaning that it's the Budget Committee. There's one set of numbers because that was the proposed budget that staff brought forward to the Budget Committee. And now the new number you're seeing on the L B one form has advertised in the newspaper, it's after the Budget Committee reviewed the numbers staff brought forward and then approved.
Okay, I would like to try to reach this point. From the first initial proposed budget to the final one.
If I may, there was only one proposed budget and now there is an approved budget.
Okay, well, numbers changed.
Yes, it has.
Yeah, and, and so what I'd like to try to get the answer to is the difference between what it is now and three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and some change less.
That was about six hours worth of Budget Committee conversation and recommendation. And the Budget Committee Chairman is here. But I think detailing all of those went through almost forty pages of notes, so I don't think we'll cover it tonight. If you would like a further detail of it, I suppose I can provide that, but. Thanks.
Well, my perspective, I'm, I'm looking at what I believe is a revenue difference of three hundred and eighteen plus.
There's also a corresponding difference for expenditure of three hundred and eight plus or two or no, but I don't have the words in mind, so.
All, all of my numbers and, and my mind trying to grasp them all came, came out of the document.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and so I would like to make a statement about the budget and the fact that, that our Budget Officer, which is Ross Schultz, and he made a statement that impressed me greatly, which was the budget numbers are, they are estimates. And they have to be estimates because we don't know for certain if all of the revenue is going to appear. But based on that, the premise that was presented, I appreciated greatly, was the fact that, that a conservative budget is a good budget to work with because there will be few with any disappointments. And I really do appreciate that. I, from a budgeting perspective, I think that is a, a proper tack to take. And and I hope that the final budget actually, in fact, looks exactly like that statement. I hope it does. In, in attempting to identify some expenditures, and just, just for example, and I won't be too terribly definitive about this, but for the sake of definition, when monies are set aside, just as an example, in the water fund, we know that, that certain expenditures are set aside for capital, capital expenditure. But if it's not detailed, then someone like me or other people looking at the budget, they wouldn't know what those monies were intended to perform. So as a suggestion, if that is very specifically identified, and I believe it has to be in the budget, because we, you know, if, if we're going to talk about it and assign dollars to projects, there is an amount of money that's going to be assigned. But the project itself, I believe, needs to be specifically stated so that it, it's not just, well, to improve the water system, it's this piece or part of the water system. And that kind of definition, I think, is very helpful. I, I couldn't, I couldn't let this opportunity go by without, and, and I know that, that some of you might not be pleased at, at the subject matter, but it has everything to do with the budget. And it is the S D C fees. And I have said that I am requesting, I am encouraging, I am hoping that our City Council would declare an emergency and make those changes happen. Happen right away, because if we don't get money, an increase in S D C fees from the fifty-seven, yeah, fifty-seven lot residential subdivision, between that and the sixty-two lot subdivision, we're, we're missing an opportunity to receive over a million dollars. And, and we all know that money just doesn't grow on trees. So I am, once again, I am requesting, I am encouraging, Council, please move as quickly as you can, as quickly as you can. There is a great deal of difference between a total of seventeen thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars and the potential that can be justified. And I, and I, I have an understanding of how S D C fees are established and how you go about changing them. We've got a tremendous amount of expenditure expenditure in capital improvement ahead of us. And we need all the help that we can get, and S D Cs will help a lot. So the difference between seventeen thousand, one ninety-one and thirty thousand, one eighty-seven would just be marvelous to help us. Because, folks, we know that we have about forty million dollars of capital improvement that is necessary for the very important, essential services. Water, newer streets, storm, all of those areas, we need it. Please, please be about our business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Anybody else for public or, or public comment for the hearing? Public hearing comment?
This, Frank Ross Greaves talked about the S D C fees. I've had some discussions with some other folks and some municipalities are providing a provision in there to reduce their fees to encourage low-income housing development. And if the governors put out some rules and money that could probably be greatly a specific development of low and income, low-income housing. So when the city looks at that, you're saying maybe try to put a double provision in there to accommodate low-income housing. Because we definitely need a lot in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Disbuss. Any other comments for the budget? Any other questions? Is there anybody online that has any questions or comments for the the public hearing budget? The none. We will go ahead and close the public hearing. And is there anything additional that you would like to?
Disclose the public hearing on the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget as approved by the Budget Committee.
Exactly what you said, close the public hearing for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget as approved by the Budget Committee on April twenty-seven, twenty-three, and the public hearing is closed. We opened the public hearing on notice of state revenue sharing possible use, and the Budget Officer will share that information with us.
This is a public hearing. Anybody that would have a comment on accepting state revenue sharing funds. They are a piece of our budget. They are not specifically allocated to one procurement or another. But the issue is, is do we want to receive state revenue sharing funds or not? So.
Is there anybody, and we're opening the public hearing for public comment on that, is there anybody that would like to speak on their thoughts on the revenue sharing use, possible use, and potentially accepted or? Please, Mr. Lawson.
I have a couple of questions. Is the amount fifteen thousand dollars?
It's whatever it says in the budget, and I don't know the exact amount that is true. It is fifteen thousand dollars, yes.
Okay, now the next question would be, what did we use the fifteen thousand dollars last year in the process of what we're doing right now?
As I explained earlier, there is no tie directly to one dollar for this or for that. It goes into the general fund allocated for all the expenditures that go from the general fund. So I can't, I can't detail where the fifteen thousand dollars is.
General fund was enriched a little bit.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's my fault. Are there any strings attached to that dollars? A little knowledge from the state.
Not that I, not that I know of. O R S. Yeah, I don't think there's any.
Free on fire.
Yeah.
Never free. Anything else?
No.
Any other comment? Mr. Lawson.
The, the state of the economy and financial circumstances are, are becoming difficult. And I, once again, I, I would like to encourage City Council to give great consideration to the point of of accomplishing in the fiscal period of this budget that we're speaking of. Do those things, but also at the same time, if we can have a very handsome amount of carryover so that next, the next fiscal period can be off to a good start. I'm, I'm just very concerned about the the availability of funds and revenues that may or may not come in. So the, the carryover, I, I would, I would hope that that would be one of the, the challenges and one of the goals that the Council would look at and try to make that up.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Statements? Budgets? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on notice of state revenue sharing possible use. And move on to the next agenda. Unfinished business, Cedar Street Storm Rehab Project Facility Main.
Yeah. So I can see what I did out in front of you, I can give you a back scope of that, wasn't there? If I may, before you go, first off, this project was one that was an opportunity that we took advantage of. I asked the mayor to use her signature authority to sign this without council seeing it first. It was lost in construction and they were mobilized in the area. We saved, I don't know, you probably know better than I, ten to fifteen thousand dollars of mobilization cost to have them come in and begin construction immediately while their equipment was here to work on any problems. With that preamble, this is not, I don't think you need to make a motion on this, but this is something that we wanted to make sure we had a chance to see, and I guess if you've got comments, we certainly here to answer them, so that I'll turn it over to Jason.
I think, also, like I say, this is just more or less a scope of this project we have going on, which is going to get some recruiting to South Cedar Street. Some of you may know, and others of you don't. It's been a pretty heavy flooding zone over the last several, several years. So there again, what Mike Ross was saying, we utilize the mobilization law and court to finish this project, put some left string on those individuals living off and soft here. Also, just to make faith, you know, to shuffle some of that like you swore on, you know, two dollar fee that I think most boards monthly, just to show that good faith in this project.
By the way, was it part of our C I P?
It was, and I brought that touch base on that, I know I shared with you guys a little bit earlier. This, you, this part was C I P and also, you know, it's eighty percent F C C funnel. So big plus, you know, you see your F C dollar, you see the T dollar team going through a service that gives back to the community.
When does your project start?
Uh, it's a few half weeks now. It's supposed to be safe.
Or we, are you going to notify the people who live?
Yes, my hopes are that you can generate this on our website, it's going to work and then all spend all this, you know, newspapers.
Because it really will, it's human, it has anybody that drives on there, but I'm just thinking because the people live across, I live there, and I don't need to be notified, but I'm wondering if you could do a notice on Red Door.
Oh, definitely.
Besides the website.
It's in practice.
Thank you so much.
Along with this project, you're also getting a half way benefit. So that's kind of a bonus to the provider.
Based on your night work, will there be, will they be working at night?
No, they don't.
So we don't need to worry about the residents being affected every evening.
Just so you, everybody knows, this project ties into our storm system that's going in on these Thursday, so we'll know along with you, our collection system. So as you say, not a problem, that's one of the catches on the tail end of your work.
There's a long way, it seems like we're getting, getting them. All right, any other new business?
I haven't finished.
I'm sorry, unfinished business, pardon. All right, then we'll move on to new business, request to enter into relief for sewer back equipment.
If, if I may, jump in here before we go. This is a, a really good project I've been talking to with Jason about. Right now, he pays about ten thousand dollars a year for sewer back. Is it a year or a month? It's a month, there's no, it's a year. About ten thousand dollars a year to have somebody come in and do our sewer back work for us. For about fifteen thousand dollars a year, right this second, we could buy our own sewer back and have it available for used anytime we need it for emergencies. Don't have to depend on somebody else to come in and take care of the explorers. Plus it would have other benefits and other uses that, that public works could use it for. He's got a quote right now, which I think could you get it in the?
Not good enough, but it's eighty, eighty, eighty thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Which is a little steep right now, that's, that pencil's out of about seventeen, eighteen thousand a year instead of that fifteen that I'm shooting for. Jason's working right now with a couple of other options that may reduce that price. And if we do buy it, one way to reduce the amount of money we have to pay to be borrowed from ourselves, we have about four million dollars sitting in the bank right now, which certainly could finance this on a five-year payout, which would be great. So this project is not completely developed. I chose to leave it on the agenda committee so that we can talk to you about what it is we're taking. So when we come back to you, 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 you've got a basis for what is really going forward. Anything you'd like to add, Jason?
I mean, just to kind of jump on what you were saying, I think the big key where there's availability, so in this game that we're calling, you know, some subcontractors is what we're doing with the scheduling conflict. It's, it's ongoing and it's growing. We're kind of handcuffed at this point in time, we only have one back-up service within the county that has an emergency response to maintenance or service leading for everybody there. Due to maintenance or services, where everybody there had anything, so this would unhand up a significant availability in the city. You. Sever that tie and to start working in the house and saving money, I mean, one thing he didn't look at, at least myself. Is what's, what's the labor cost there, we're just looking at just the general machine being on site, uh, also looking at the labor cost that I kind of. Challenged to decide there, so. I think it's, it's, it's healthy for the city to start looking inward or. And doing away with exporting contracting, you know, as much as we can do in the house, long term, it's gonna save us. A lot of money in return and have that response time to have.
Do other neighboring cities have the sewer back equipment or use it?
Uh, this is a competition with, uh, I just had Ross, I know, talking to. Dish which, um, Carlton's right now in the motion of trying to purchase one, so, but I was telling Ross that I might reach out to. Carlton and see if they want to partner with this, see if that's a way to take away all expenditure, or do we just want to look at it independently, but to answer your question. Most and all cities have their own tractor, back, back trailer, or they have their own back.
And can you have one, so you can lease that out, do others, do we need it?
I. I, I don't want me to, that, that starts bringing me to some set of complications. You know, something like a share between us and Carlton would be awesome, cause it's local, you know each other, but if you lease it out, uh. Well, mine are someplace, so then, you know, you end up with some issues like.
I'm just a little piece to that. So in the last two years, I've been training staff on a backer trailer, we've been bringing men. And utilizing around town on smaller projects so that they can just get their hands on experience with, so we'd be willing to that. With these guys already being developed with the new machines, so, and plus.
Thoughts to know?
So leasing it, could you contract it out with one of our vans on?
Well, that's, that's what we were talking about, that just set its own set of requirements, it's all, uh, something you can look at, but. You know, then you gotta have, you know, you're paying somebody. You go out, then how do you justify that person, maybe it's not working, or she, whichever way it goes, but. I, I don't know, that's, that's not the preferred way.
Question. Uh, you say a sewer back, is it capable of pot holding?
Yes.
So you could use it to go after water leak as well.
Council Corrigan, you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I just had a question, beyond the cost of the machine and then the maintenance of the machine, we have to get any permit for that thing?
No.
Good question. Thank you for the line. For those taking notes, it helps to, when you, if you announce your name when you see.
Well, you did that for me, so I'm a lot, thank you.
Okay, no questions from the council, do you need any decisions on this, or is it information for us that could be aware of?
No, I'm sorry, not a decision at this time, I don't think our paperwork's ready yet, so hopefully next month.
Well, we'll be looking for it, that's for sure. And this has been related to that?
No.
Okay, this is something different, okay, thank you. Alright, next new business, letter of court grant request from Jane Roberts Maxfield, um, I received this email that I think, um.
If I may, she received a vendor class and your information.
Um, I did respond to the email on Friday. And I did offer to submit a, a support letter for their grant opportunity, and they got back to me on. Sunday night or Monday morning, we do, and said that the grant closes, they would have to have it in by the end of the day Monday. And so they didn't get anything from us at that point. Um, but I did let them know we were interested in supporting their efforts in this grant opportunity, and if, and in the future they can. Give us a little heads up, but, but they knew it was short timing, so that, that didn't, didn't work out that way. Is there any questions from council on this? I hope so too, and the, um, email response included. You know, the, the council supports, I knew businesses, the council supports. Um, their efforts and we can develop new businesses and their, their places, um. Diamonds in the rough grant application for restoring the building facade on the original historical design of the building in town. Yes, we support that, and so they said that in the email response, so if they were smart, they would print that and use it. That's possible, is there anything else we need to be aware about?
No.
Uh, C, judge.
You should have in your folder, I gave you guys a copy of an interview agreement. Me, uh, the judge and the city, uh, she has signed her, I don't have her signature. And I have a signed con, so with your approval, and I guess I'll fix a signature more. Did you, or do you have the mayor sign to pay that, that we need to process to?
Yeah, for the mayor.
Yes, please.
Any questions from council on the contract itself for the day?
No previous ones?
No, we've only paid a previous time. I made the motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for municipal court judge Laurie, sorry Laurie. Ucalus. May, and signing and operate the material. And B, park facility reservation request.
So we just received this, I think today and yesterday, very short notice. Uh, it's for the McMinnville, um. Yeah, amateur radio club, they wanna come and spend a couple of nights in our park, I guess. Festival of amateur radios, um, staff took a look at this and. Uh, right now our thoughts are one, we want all the proper paperwork filled out, I'm not certain that it's complete, because we haven't had a chance. To go through it a hundred percent, uh, we'd like them to carry a light, the living writers holding that city harness. Something goes haywire, and, um, three, uh, we would like to know. Everybody's name that's spending the evening in our park.
Yeah, it could look like nine AM to four PM both days, correct it?
Yes, uh, it's, it's an annual event held by, uh, American Radio Relate, it's international. They anticipate about forty thousand hands and folks participating. Uh, and I just got a call this afternoon, uh, for the permit, uh, we are insured through A R R L insurance. Uh, it's gonna be hard to give you the names of people who participate staying overnight at that time. And that's kind of a new requirement, because when people stay overnight, at Derby Days. I don't think there's ever a muster list made up like that.
We've, we've got a new set of rules that go with. Uh, I'm not certain the correct word anymore, homeless people staying, and so. Uh, even if we could get that list of the people that stayed overnight.
So we're the unique, I'm sorry. Okay, well, I do have that, I do have it in draft, and we'll get it to you as soon as, uh. We get some of our insurance writer and stuff like that, brought together.
Does staff have any questions or concerns about conflict, anything like that, with anything safety? Use of the park and repair the park afterward?
That's what I expressed, the thing of the problem was, you know, just to keep the park involved, to better attack, to involve the breed. Any close moving aside inch, you know, so awesome.
And I noticed a waiver for parking, uh, without parking on the grass, is that?
That, that was in the, oh, email, during that, uh, now our only unit that we would park on the grass would be a. Converged camp trailer that's used for emergency communications, and we use that as the go-to. Which is a get on the air trailer for non-hams and public to come in and make contact under the supervision of a licensed ham. Uh, it's just a very small two-wheel trailer, um, much, much smaller than the normal units you find during derby days. Uh, or any other campers that we would have with the outside defense, like RVs will be outside of that.
Is this a public event, can public attend your event?
The public is encouraged to attend. You, mayor and the council are encouraged to attend as well.
Sounds interesting, yeah.
We, uh, the club gets points for an elected official to come in, so.
Well, that's good.
And this, this is the first time since COVID that we've been able to get together as a club publicly.
Very nice.
It's a great journey, Andy, we collaborated also, I am talking about that with the boiler.
Thank you.
We have requested the Yanale County Sheriff's Office, uh, volunteer response unit to provide security Friday night. Cause we won't be doing any hammer operation, Saturday night will be all hams will be overnight, so they'll be participating. Uh, and will be present, uh, so it's, at that point, it's not really a sweep over, it's, it's an operational period.
Okay, and it'll be the full weekend?
Yes, we start, uh, Friday morning, or going to, uh. The requirements, we can set up from eleven o'clock Friday morning till eleven o'clock Saturday morning. At which time the operational test starts till eleven o'clock the next morning. So the contest is a twenty-four hour contest, and then after that, so on Sunday, then, then we do our decommissioning and cleaning up.
And you have a safety officer in time, is that?
Yes, we're required to have a safety officer.
Okay, and they're coordinating with the chief?
If the chief wants to coordinate, yes.
Any questions from council? Any concerns from council? Alright, um, we will wait for the additional information, the insurance and the requests that the city administrator requested, and. Um, we, we can.
If, if I may.
For you to.
Yeah, if you could, uh, make a motion, uh, to approve, uh, their application. Uh, with the, the meeting, um. Put down here, oh, filling out the appropriate paperwork, dividing liability writer, naming the city. Uh, three, uh, submitting the names and prior or post. We didn't win that, uh, the attendance on those evenings, and, um. Being mindful of damage, I guess, I don't want to say that, but putting our heart back like it was. If that's okay, then a motion to allow me to sign to that, Jean Graven would be fine.
Organize.
May, may I?
Yes, sir.
Did you get everything on that motion?
It was.
No, did you get the motion, so?
Yeah, proper paperwork, liability insurance, put prior or post defense names and mind blow damage.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much, I, I trust Jaden. And the, uh, E, D Q P G E, this is also good news.
E?
E, the E Q and P G E at the property next door?
Uh, yes, uh, actually, that's not an action item, uh, it was put under, uh. Information announcements, so.
Alright, so we'll move to department reports, and we'll start with administration, Mr. Russell.
Um, I, I really don't have anything, Jean Graven is here on a day-to-day basis, making sure things run. Well, so I'm gonna just turn it over to.
Always the one into the other, there can have been coinciding events. Um, as we see Angela Fowler over there, she's. Being doing, learning the processes and taking that so forth, and she's picking up on it quicker than I did, so I appreciate that. And it, it's a process, um, she's being, some of the treaties that are going on. And looking at a lot of the years, the folder documents of what requirements are and the legality and so forth. I just want to publicly appreciate her work and her dedication to that. And everyone was step forward and volunteered, finish with C and B, looks on their day. Uh, we have been, Kim and I have been meeting with, um. Eastland Picka, which is with courage, in that we're working on a project to paint the town in the ink. Which will be in October, or, for, for where. Now, we're looking at, uh, getting signage, present living space going to. Uh, make a ribbon like we had out front with the pinwheel. And it'll be posted up there for the month along, so. Wanted to talk also, I kind of said, like, do it with a thumbs up, but. I purchased, purchased some lights, sort of the LED light from my house. The change to probably different colors, patterns, you can talk to them and they talk with my top back, pointing back at you. I don't wanna go that far with these lights, but something that we can put up on the building that were. Kind of permanent fixtures along the daylight, relatively expensive, between eighty to a hundred and forty dollars. Um, for the set of lights, and you can do it remotely from your phone, you can change over a thousand different colors. So for the different seasons, we could have different colors, and then see how that works, see how other businesses would like to maybe. Jump in on that, uh, and when they're off, you don't see it. And knock on wood, I've had that in your couple of years, there's really a little maintenance, so we're working on a project for that, for. The town, which will be revenues as we do for, for the different, that, that we have, probably as a convention month. So that's something that we've been working on, also if you guys have seen the radar trailer. Well, in two weeks, sort of something.
Right.
We have some of the wiring on it and, um, the new batteries there, and I think that thing, that real bright thing in the sky has been helping a little bit with. Energies, the batteries can keep them in charge of the field, so it was a test program, or it's been sitting, it's been. Uh, south of the city, it's been as long, hopefully start doing that around town, as long as we keep some change, it looks like we're going to do. Also today, I have a fun opportunity to apply for the, uh, O dot grants, per O dot, uh, permits. For the everyday grades, so I'm working through that process and getting that all of our insurance and his insurance and that. Can I have all of our insurance and his insurance in that process, and putting it forward for the everyday parade. That route, and. As we do earlier, for that, for rewriting traffic. Also been working on looking at getting tablets for council, because I've been looking at the amount of paper that we are. Lack of battery worth wasting. Because. Technology advanced, we have to have security features on them. I found some, what I thought were gold ones for like eighty-one dollars a piece. And have the covers and, uh, the keyboards. And I, he said no, because they are very, very, very compromised, even if we're. We would be doing it for years, they would recommend it. Their recommendation is for every ninety-eight dollar piece down, which. Kind of right out the window for now, so still looking, is something that would be more beneficial like that. That probably isn't eighty-one dollars, like you do.
No way.
So still working on that process, and I don't have a solution yet, but. Going to work with them. I would like to get something.
How many are you interested in meeting?
I would, I was thinking so, that way. The council has, by, they can be shared, we have an extra one, but not just for council meetings, but for any other committees, so they can be universally used, which has to be. Yes, you have my whole bunch of them, or they have one. That has to have security, and the same security to that beyond, but we all care. Could be cheaper just to have that in the shared, amongst the council and their committee. For the generator. So, so I haven't answered yet, still working on it, it's not that.
Last year, in the last year's budget, we did set aside some funding for, um. Computer upgrade, electronic, um, website. Funding to get a website updated. Uh, could that be taken out of that fund?
It could be, I was gonna take some out of the chemical fund and then out of the Hazer account. However, add it up, ten grand. Get the process.
What about Chromebook?
I'm sorry?
Chromebook.
That's what I'm gonna look into, I think I might have the same issue, I know. Because this isn't a new topic, I talked at the school about that, to see if they might have any, if they're just, they have a bunch of them that we're just sitting there. And if they're utilizing, they're utilizing now, especially in that. We'll get, and there've been a lot of kids on the campus, so I was gonna check at the school again, and I talked to the superintendent, and I meet up with him monthly. And see what they might have, or if they were not.
So, I mean, are you thinking the council would take them home with them, or are they gonna stay here?
Don't know. Because that would be, as I said, down the road discussion, when I find something and the team. Where that would leave.
I got, I have some ideas on that, depending on what you do and stuff.
Yeah, okay, oh, we can share that. Also, if you see that little monitor behind you, I've been working on a. Process, and I need badly got that set up, I don't know what it's doing right now. They've, it's, it's about ago, they've been working on it throughout the day, uh, so that computer there is linked to, when I'm either gonna propose, but it's kind of small, be it for announcement. To propose that we just turn that big screen around, to have it looking outside, still looking at that. Concept, but it worked pretty good today. So that's computer that will be the catalyst that will be doing all our announcements and notifications, right at that location, turning it around at the window. And it's big enough that everybody can see it from the sidewalk, or. I mean. Do you envision, so I can see it actually.
So you mean, instead of having this piece of the paper taped upon your finger?
Yes. Only like that, on there. However, it's been a process, and there's. Technologies and it'll be on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And the securities have to be on it, and I don't want any of our credentials on it. So that'll be the process, hopefully in the future for announcements, but I'm looking. If that doesn't work, then I'll figure out what I can do with that, or if it can get closer, where they look at it up front, in the front office, it's pretty long, in the window there, where they can cover it up to the. Supposed to kind of peer over the screen. So that computer, they'll be able to be utilized, and that's where all the announcements and the notifications, and everything will be able to just be kind of scrolling through, like you see when we go into the restaurant, and they'll become, and you know. So kind of before, so it's been. Be left out.
I think. Technically, that's good, that man.
I don't know about that. Uh, things with the, you guys have a report in there, I think, with the fix, going well. Um, nothing remarkable to report, it's actually going to keep things down at the academy, it's going to last, taking some leadership, last, and we be. Doing well, I would assume, so he must be doing well down there. Does anyone have any question? Uh, there, no, or you have anything? Want to add?
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I thought it worked. It's wonderful.
Yeah, uh, you guys do the water plants and water, um, we've been doing some load bearing calculations on the filter media, that's gonna be getting replaced on June nineteen. Just to see if that load, it persists and bake on this one filter, currently we operate on two filters. So there's gonna be a lot of calculation and trial, that in regards, or as well, then you can bring in, down from then we can take out. Um, so far, what we're seeing, as far as calculations, is we could be offline for two days. About two, possibly three, so that falls in our timeframe as far as removing one filter, putting one filter on. So we should be good to go, uh, also regardless of that, we've been working with the contractor. And with that, Delta Services, trying to scope that work, working with some subcontractors to build up the apron to get. Back your trucks up top, so we remove that filter media and the product coming in with cranes. So it's a lot of. Small engineering and a little bit of physics involved, the whole process. Things seem to be turning really well, I'm like, I'd like to see more of that load bearing, that two-day buffer, um. So that about sums up with water, obviously, we've got the project going on, the distribution. Throughout town, coming down, Juniper, first, Hemlock, third, we've been doing pressure testing, so far it's been good. Um, we've been flooring lines, activating any services that are on that line. Um. Back to samples have came back really well, so. Everything in that process is moving pretty, pretty fast, and there's just been all offline services right now, all offline. Structures, so right now they moved over a sewer, and they're starting to go down east there, there again, there's a tie-in yesterday. We did run into a little snap, who made, and that's the road, the road is not. It's slipping off at a tremendous rate. So now we're gonna be digging to that road out. Roughly. Two hundred linear feet, and that road's gonna be dug out, exiled to a deeper depth with the GeoGrid. So we're, we'll, in the past, we're getting a better road, uh, but we're just waiting for the GeoTech to come back, so. Some idea of what we can do, uh, that's no bearing cost-wise to the city, that's on the developers, we're not, not a problem. The city funding budget, um. AJ pointed something out earlier, there is gonna be pipe bursting going on for the sewer, um, it's our, it's our main trunk line. It's roughly about a thousand linear feet, but they're gonna be bursting, it's gonna be going under Highway Forty-Seven to our infill station. They're gonna be. Utilizing public works, uh, as a staging for that bursting, it's gonna be loud, it's, it's gonna be abrupt, but.
What does that mean, bursting?
Yeah, they're gonna sound, yeah, they're gonna be, started putting, setting up. Digging earth to get to our. Current collection system that runs to our public works building, which runs out for lagoons, what they do is they take a. HDPD pipe, and they pull it through, and then they're pulling it, they're bursting the existing pipe, so. As they pull through. It takes that old pipe away, and it just, but they use it basically for like, like an alley, it gets where it goes, like a lane.
So new pipe burst through old pipe?
Yeah. Yeah.
Got it, and old pipe consists of what insurance?
Oh, two-nine-hundred.
And raised, you know?
Seen it all out there. Um, so yeah, it's. Moving back, even quick, uh, the storm. Been along quite well, and there again, as we detail. This will work here, that's all kind of near time, but, um. Another piece that added that project, they found a bunch of tile that we were expecting on the Bandai property, so now we're just looking at how we're gonna tie in some of the lateral, and where we're gonna train it from. An engineering perspective, and kind of agreeing with the city, but. We're holding pretty stiff, that we don't want anything tied into drainage or tile, so we wanted to go through our main lines.
Is that their engineer or ours?
Ours, ours and theirs.
Working together?
Working together.
What is the tile for?
Uh, drainage for the food. Uh, there. Kind of a funky concept out there, I mean, typical farming, but they weren't ready for as much as we might have. Um. With sidewalks, one part of this is, I, I think it generates. Uh, some topograph off of their survey, so that all of our sidewalks from the new subdivision, two, like, three locks, three locks were stolen, are gonna mash up. We're looking at, trying to make this sidewalks more uniform. All through Third Street, so.
Want to be on both sides?
Yeah. Yeah, once those locks sell, and right now, one individual bought one lock, so. We're using surveys instead of just telling you where to put it on the new, and everything, so. Well, uh, ours, Josh, they're keeping up on them, they look really great, um, why did you stop by? Arrow, I'll fill you in on that, um, so. All, all these are good, staff's, you know, it can be, uh, pretty fast, um, just dealing with a lot of kind of contracts. Right now, we're gonna kick off for next year. Working with murder concrete, about it's a bit, just on the Highway Forty-Seven project that we kind of introduced to our budget, seeing how fast we look at that. And how fast we just works now.
Then it's a week?
It is not. It was safe. Along those turns, I made up for council, but rapid. Reflective. Riding, or crosswalk, so that's what this. Traffic safety supply gave me a quote here, we're looking at. Eleven thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-six cents to have safe. Rapid. Linking crosswalk system. Now would be placed Highway Forty-Seven. For through traffic, heading east on four, two forty, and west down on Mars Town. But you have to look at your intersection right here in front of T and E, and on, for the real estate agent. So. On those side of the road.
So that activates, and it's all four spots?
Yes, all.
And what activates it?
Uh, so. So all commotions.
So they set it into the crosswalk, and it turns on? And kind of give us an idea of what that would look like?
But your fourways. Stop, that's sort of two-way stop, and you're fully entered section there, you would have a four. Rapid blinking lights for crosswalk. So when pedestrian wants to cross, it starts the.
Jack Forty-Seven or back to the old course?
That actually is.
In both directions?
Older.
Out.
But I was most impressed by the actual numbers. I was, I was, it's extraordinarily larger, really, you know, eleven thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. So is this time sent to you for? No, it's not, I mean, what I was, what I was mainly focused on here, showing you guys numbers, is this is something you want me to pursue, or next step is ODOT.
So ODOT, I haven't seen that video.
They have not, but. I'm a betting man, and I would bet that they would agree to it.
So they just have to prove it, they don't have to pay for it.
They don't have to pay.
So my concern, I was.
Yeah. Yeah, they cut.
I was looking to see where, how, where it would be mounted, who it's on the post.
It is on the post.
Those intersections are not visible, it's parked cars right there. When you're coming, how far out does the post go? That's my concern, I would leave.
The line has, like, went out there, it's, but honestly, yeah. Yeah, so, ODOT does have. Um, regulations for signage. And as you see the ones up in there, they're up higher. So ODOT have regulations for them, or they would say.
There was one, the corner of PA. And somebody was coming from South Forty-Seven. And there was a truck parked in T and E, where they technically, you're listening to that flashing.
I mean, and that, that, and it's what we could do, expand our yellow lines, put parking for. And everything else, I mean, I guess, and we've talked about that before, I mean.
That's not yellow, that's suggested, can we change the color? My name, yeah, like yellow means suggestion, right? You suggest you don't prefer it.
I mean, it's a matter of. It's illegal for the parking, I know.
It's illegal, okay. Nick, let me do this. Okay, can I ask a question for the color of the lights? What, what color would it be, yellow or red?
Yellow. Just wondering, yes.
It's not gonna make people stop, so.
I, I can't, I can't speak for anyone, it's right, so, I, I had a hope that they would stop if I saw a blinking pedestrian. Amber, yellow light flashing right at their face.
Will there be signs ahead that will say debris and popping?
Most likely, I think, once we want to make this go through or push through. ODOT will start to very late decide. Which I don't think will be eternal by any means, I think, if they saw our efforts. I'm sure they would just jump on board, and. So it's totally, it's totally, it's alone.
Well, I'm really grateful you both are for serving, and thank you, thank you. All right.
That's great, Frank. It really is.
Anything else?
I was.
Thank you. All right. Um, back to administration, anything there before we?
No, committee report through next.
Any report? Funny. Uh, more is, is anybody here to represent, any questions? Uh, Councilor Corrigan, are you available?
I absolutely am, uh, did attend, two seconds here. So I attended their meeting, uh, for the planning commission, uh, on the thirteenth of April. Uh, I was able to attend until seven thirty, uh. And then I had to leave, unfortunately, I was not able to get onto the Zoom meeting. Uh, so I only heard just the staff report, the staff report was, uh, geared towards the, uh, proposed gas station and convenience store. Uh, just across from City Hall there. Uh, Walt had just gone through it, the, uh, commissioners, sort of the, the. The things that fit, the things that don't fit, um. I think there's still some, some work that needs to be done with the applicant in order to come into the, the standards, as, as I understood it from Walt. Uh, and that was at about the point when I was not able to continue with the meeting.
So the planning commission is still in discussions with the developer?
I believe that to be the case, um, the. From what I understand, the, the part of their proposal was to, uh, originally, they were going to have their building set back from Maple Street. Uh, like eighty feet or something, um, that does not fit with the criteria for Yamhill, which is a zero-foot setback off of Highway Forty-Seven. So in their new proposal, they've simply rotated the building ninety degrees off. Which, by their current design, would put a giant brick wall with no windows all along Maple Street. As well as a giant brick wall all along First Street. Which, uh, according to Walt, uh, does not fit with, uh, the design standards for the central business overlay. As, uh, all new buildings should look similar to those around it. And that's kind of where. I had finished up.
Thank you.
It seems that they have some more work to do to try to get approved.
All right. Have they gotten to, um, the DEQ level yet?
By understanding, the DEQ would not step in until after. Uh, planning had approved and requested council to approve, council would approve. And then DEQ would have something to look at, as it stands now, it's just an idea and a proposal. So DEQ would not yet get involved.
Great information, thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And what, what she just said, I was at that meeting, part of the discussion was. The travel, I'll, I'll say travel lane that goes on either side of the pump. It's roughly sixteen feet and that was a concern. And then on the end hub that is on maintenance. If the vehicle is in that end pump, you know, getting gas or whatever, there's only ten feet. Roughly a wrecked, somebody could drive around that outside vehicle. So there was a big long discussion with all of that. And so that's where they were gonna continue and they were going to be getting. The developer said she was going to be getting an engineer or something to know that it was feasible. Yeah, and so that's where it ended, basically. For the record, that was Patty Karen, oh, I'm sorry, she, and she provided an additional update, thank you.
I uh attended the meeting and the key point takeaways were that there's going back to the developer. And the engineer with points of egress and anger. Make sure that there's plenty of room for the uh commercial motor vehicles going in, so fuel tanks. Fuel trucks going in and out from their fueling. As well as the lighting. And so they're gonna get the specifications on the lighting, which is the lighting on these overhead canopy. For the uh gas prices. So they wouldn't be flashing like, there would be a solid color. Um with whatever lumens, you know, within standard. And they will let you change once a day when the gas price is changed once a day. So those are the key point takeaways is the building. Uh structure, aestheticly pleasing to the other buildings within town. There was a conversation about the roof line not being flat, but I'm working around going. Would you raise up the park lap, so they had a conversation about that as well. Uh the brick building looking aesthetically pleasing with putting in some windows. Uh where it would be the brick and Maple Street. Um there's a uh walk up, right up window that they discussed, but there's been a table that we get more information on as well. So a lot of things went back to the developer, um the engineer, as well as the fuel company itself. And there was a conversation about how the employees would be there, hard feature employee, um bicycle, uh hard features. So there's a lot that was tabled, but they will be bringing back.
I'm in commission, uh water advisory committee.
Alright, Johnson Chairman of Water Advisory, um we did meet in, in April. Committee of reviews and. Great studies, we're still waiting to get back from Tim Tice. We sent him with some questions we had and so we're waiting for that return of that. And the committee did make recommendations to the budget committee for increasing the budget committed. The only other thing that's going on with water advisory is so we're gonna need to change our meeting schedule. My new job's not gonna allow me to be available three in the afternoon anymore. Um so we're looking at an evening meeting. We'd like to hold it on Tuesday if that's possible. Um but probably not every month. Talk with Jason, we're looking at maybe every other month. Just because we're waiting for a lot of stuff most of the time. So that is our request, we're to move that to a. Tuesday evening if there's no conflicts with the. Scheduled meetings.
You're thinking seven P M, is that what you?
Seven P M.
Tuesday evenings every other month is what you're proposing?
Every other month, we will not meet this month if we haven't got anything else yet, so. Plus Jason, you have a reason to meet, members of office, I don't.
So the next one would be in June?
Yeah, the last Tuesday of Q. Information that happened. Time for the committee to review it before the meetings.
Jason, would that fit into your scheduling?
Um preferably.
So the city has to provide two staff members, is that being correct? And that would be you and a reporter?
Like I stated, um Wednesday or Friday would be a better fit for me as far as the evening.
And I think Paul would have to be.
These are very smooth. And the last Wednesday or Friday, the March regional, their events or meetings on the calendar for all. And our re- um our reporters, do you have a? Any conflicts with any of the dates?
Uh Wednesday, Friday or?
Or Tuesday evening?
Pretty much any day.
I'm, I'm pretty open.
Okay, and it's in the evening, okay. And every other month, is what you're suggesting, okay. And I'll, I'll ask staff if they'll check the calendar, make sure that that's available and get back to you on, um. On a date that, that. Good for the city, staffing.
Alright.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Brian. And Angie, can I teach you as responsible for checking the calendar and making sure that the city? Has availability, the rooms available, the staff is available on either Tuesday, Wednesday or Friday. Of the last week of the month, every other month beginning June. You got that? Yeah. Thank you so much. Anything else, water advisory?
No.
Thank you very much, Yamhill downtown association.
Karen, I am Canada. Address one eighty North Maple, and I'm a volunteer for Yamhill downtown association. And um our, our latest, so we're reporting kind of our latest activities and we are hustling to get this um. Beverly clear the public event going, so fourth annual of the year. And traditionally, our special committee member, Amy Brewer, who's an educator and children's book. Writer, it has spearheads this effort and she's been opening up. Story contests, coloring contests for kids from kindergarten to preschool, and she attracted some stores entries from local. To your Tennessee and nothing internationally yet, but you know, maybe I'll do the annual. Yeah, and so we always try to involve some sort of public um aspect to that, usually during. May thirteenth is kind of like our window to have a celebration and offer, you know. Some recognition for the kids that, that win or participate, show up. And this year we are adding a five K fun run to the preview. And another one of our missions of the downtown association is include all the public and also draw. Business to our local business and Larkin House, we always tend to deny our go to, for the back lawn and Heidi Davis, both of them serve often, so. This essentially takes place May thirteenth, starting at ten A M, and it kicks off with a fun run. We were working with Steve Grayden, thank you so much, and the weather for insurance and our friend Kathy at the county. And we have all the proper meetings, so we're, we're good to go that way, and we have a bunch of volunteers with search that doesn't share safety. And so five K basically goes down Olive and Jaws off to. Pike and then Bishop Scott Road and then turn around and then comes back to Larson House. Um and then there's just a bunch of free fun value. At the Larson House, so we'll have like the usual bounce house and base painting and. My daughter has a library five deck where she's giving out free books that she's earned money for. Um we also have other cool things like the, um or the outdoor in education adventures. As part of the nonprofit, they use summer camps for kids and they just want to get them outside and so. It's kind of like a cool thing to draw attention to our cool nature trail, which Jason's been working so hard on. So we'll have a guy from um the nonprofit to take the herd of kids over to the trail, we'll have like slimes, prongs, like, you know. This is a habit of a wood duck, better, better. And then at the end of the scale, there's like pussy willows on the bloom and. If mothers say they're following they, so there's a cool activity for the kids to make a cool mother's hating with pussy willows, it's pretty cool. So um, oh, we'll also have a solar telescope in the problem observatory there. We can, when Richard decides to have events and we'll have free beer. If you run and walk, um also for a farm will be there with. Right, this is eight five dollars, it's another way to. Um so yeah, free hot dogs, uh cold brew coffee and free ice cream and cake. And the fun um attraction is for the run itself, um we have a professional musician that's going to be. The pace setter at an eight minute mile pace while shredding soles on the electric guitar, and then his buddy is gonna be. Doling the guitar hand in back with the controller, so if you pass this guy, you get like, you know, free swag. So um that's the event, May thirteenth at ten A M. And it's cool because it's like a lot of fun stuff for kids. But the ratings are registered for, it is thirty dollars, all the proceeds go back to the downtown association and then come and support the Larson House. Any questions?
Wow. It is a lot, it's grown tremendously.
Yeah, I think we have about um, for a second, you mean like fifty to sixty registered runners?
Wow.
Yeah, you're, we're pretty pleased. So, local runners are, they're coming from Portland, Beaverton, local. Uh Hill Row, so yeah, the work that got out, who knows?
Yeah, this is so cool, you guys are doing amazing.
Well, thank you, thanks everybody, really.
You're doing all the work.
A lot of volunteer hours, I had no idea. Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah, oh, yes, yeah, come, thank you, yes, I'll be there, but yeah, I know, we have a special position for you.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Your honor, if I may.
Please.
Uh there should be under committee reports, uh Yamhill Neighborhood Association, and I did not put that on.
Ours hasn't.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, it does? Good, that must have been one of them. Thank you, sorry.
No, that's, thanks for, could have had that, not in there, that would have been valuable to me. Um Yamhill neighborhood association.
Yes, Mayor. I mean, Robert Deacon, I represent the Yamhill Neighborhood Association, uh. We are very busy these uh few months, uh I'd like to talk about. Our last month's disaster preparedness uh where was mass shooting. Officer Miller did the course, did a great job, it was a big turnout, uh about twenty people. And uh we, Officer Miller asked who was uh prepared with a carry permit? Uh about ninety percent of people raised their hand, so I was shocked. But he asked also, uh how many people carry every day and only one person raised their hand. So that's kind of interesting, but anyway, uh enough about that, our next disaster preparedness. Event is called Stop the Bleed, it's May twentieth at two P M. And it is again at the uh Yamhill United Methodist Church on Oral Street. Uh there is a required donation fee to give back to the hospitals so that the materials that they use. The dollars, the return gift and everything they use uh gets reimbursed and. Just a little something in their coffers to help them uh uh take care of that and it's five bucks. Uh but we're asking for more, if you want to give more, it's going to be hard for sure. Uh you can still sign up at uh W W W Y N A class dot site. And if not, you can call me and I can set you up with a ticket or, or a spot and uh. We also hit the uh news register paper this past Tuesday. Uh they were timing up to do a short article about uh Stop the Bleed and its national. Recognition and the fact that uh uh over a million uh people have been trained. Both police and school and general public. And so that was, that was very nice of them, it read very well. This Saturday, the thirteenth at nine o'clock at the Larson House. Will be at the same time that Karen's event is going off about a, an hour later. Uh but we're having coffee with Y and A. And it's a publicized uh event for anybody to show up and have a little conversation with it. Uh no pressure, no, 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 not that it's just casual conversation. And uh we're hoping, we get a few people showing up, you know? Um most of the people will be running with the kind of characters. Uh but we'll provide uh some refreshments uh at the Larson House, so. And next month is in the works for another disaster preparedness uh event. It's, we're going to try and get the CERT organization back. The one that had COVID at the last minute. And this uh CERT organization will be giving the CERT class for elderly. Low income. Um disabled people, which is uh still a. Thing inside of what we are still trying to do here with bringing the community on board with. Being familiar with what it takes during disasters. And personally, um when I heard uh the person speak at the CERT. About this uh uh type of um. Situation where being an able-bodied person, I wouldn't have thought about any of the aspects. That an unable-bodied person or disabled person or low-income person would have. Facing a disaster, it's just entirely different than an able-bodied person, so. Other than that, uh that's about it, oh. Not associated with. Yamhill Neighborhood Association, but as a representative of, um. Being asked by the planning commission to form an organization for, uh. Yeah, I don't know why that, those three words went out of my head, but economic development. And with that said, there was five of us that met. But last. Weeks are falling together, I'm, they're all running together, but anyway, we met. At Larson House and we talked for about two hours and came up with a plan of a plan of a plan. So uh basically, the first part uh of the uh, uh of the uh meeting was to. Hammer out a plan for. What is the look and feel of the city? And we're going to take this, uh everybody has their job to do. Some of us are going to different cities and finding out what they're doing in their uh historical society area. And we're coming back in a month with another meet to. Solidify all this information that we gathered throughout the month. Uh there is five cities in which we're going to glean information from. So it's uh, it's moving along and uh we will report this to the planning commission. Uh when they have their next meeting.
Well done.
Yes, thank you.
You're doing a lot of really good things in the community, thank you.
O H S U, oh, trauma, trauma, the trauma department of O H S U, that's who's teaching Stop the Bleed.
Excellent class, I recommend anybody do.
Excellent, thank you, you've got a good recommendation there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our Mr. Mayor.
Alright, council reports. Um any, Congress got anything to report, anything you'd like to speak about? Councilor Corrigan?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I do have one thing, um I wanted to read for the record the uh Judge. Uh Karen Mark, Margaret, Judge Karen Mark, um his resignation letter, I wanted to read for the rec. His resignation letter, I wanted to read for the record because it was really quite inspiring and. I am grateful for him. He said, please reset my resignation. I will miss working with your staff. The court administrator, Kim Steele, is very knowledgeable in the court procedures as well as the law in this area. She's able to properly manage the business of the court as well as the state requirements. She has great skills in her interaction with the public and your citizens as well, dealing with. When dealing with what is often not a pleasant situation for them. She is always concerned about what is fair and when appropriate, how she can help others solve problems for them. She always follows through with the cases and keeps us, keeps us all on track. The police department is such an asset to the community. Keith Graven has been remarkable and he's guided to the department. I rely on him when I have questions. He certainly sets and achieves high standards for the place department. He is constantly seeking ways to improve the department, which makes the department outstanding. He has a genuine interest in the community. The police officers are reliable in every sense of the word. They present their case as well. Their interaction with the public reflects well upon the department and the city. With very few expectations, the citizens feel that they have been treated fairly and given the benefit of any doubt. I have never seen a situation where it has been otherwise. This local police department really helps maintain the city's visibility and atmosphere that makes the community a nice place to live. I am sure there will be many challenges in the future as the area is discovered by more and more people. I'm also sure that your staff and police department will be able to meet those challenges. Thanks again for allowing me to serve. I certainly appreciate the people who are willing to take their private time to volunteer for important positions. Mayor and city council, your efforts really support the city of Yamhill and retain the great friendly and rural lifestyle that is so wonderful. I want to just take this opportunity to thank our officers, our police and Kim for the record on representing the city, so. Thank you all. I am up here to report information, the resignation letter I did read that with the E Q P B, do we want to make enough fun of that?
We posted their letter to the website, so if you want more information, it's there. But I think the information that I have is that moved to start. Date for site work to June fifth, designed the gas station coming down. And we needed to wait for P G D to disconnect power to the gas station building before we could rock it, basically.
You know, get.
To be noted, I'll be getting with C C S, Scott, the representatives of the mayhem. To go over have a free call as far as what the city's expectations are on the safety control, traffic. Lightbox, the management and the pavement. Yeah, that'll be happening next week.
On June, no.
It's June.
You're meeting.
June fifth is the start date, but I don't think it's coming down.
But the meeting is. And just for some background, we're looking at, we're talking about the property here next to us, which was formerly the Baker. Bakery, formerly a gas station, formerly a few other things. The E Q has been cleaning that property from any contamination. And they have to demolish the building in order to get the contamination under the building and to get the tanks that are under the building. Either taken out or filled up or something that to, to make the property. Clean as far as the E Q is concerned. And the whole, the whole plan is in the end, the county co-phones that property. The previous owner submitted a. A claim against the county because they wanted to get it back. And they offered to pay up their back taxes to do it. Apparently that has happened multiple times over the years where they've gotten behind and. The county gave them grace. Well, apparently this time the county said, no. We've already got invested money in cleaning up the property. We're going to, we're going to maintain it. And so the county initially has made an agreement with the city of Yamhill. That once the property is clean and the city would have no liability for that property, they would offer the city the purchase of that property. And so the city is waiting for the property to be cleaned and. So that the process is happening and that's moving along now because the, the property owner is. Is no longer appealing the decision.
Okay, so Robert Davis, as a member of the Economic Development Committee. The question we asked each other, which we didn't have an answer to, that's why I'm asking you. Is the small building? The house behind the gas station, is it also going to be demolished?
No, no, there's no contamination, so the E Q will not be, not be touching that part of the property.
What we were thinking of is getting a grant and giving that building refurbished. And turn it into an actual community center for the city of Yamhill.
The little house?
The little house.
Interesting, okay.
That way it takes the burden off of having to move here in the council. For whatever reason, and we also thought maybe it might. Also serve as a leading place for different organizations within the city. Y V A might need there, Y N A might need me there. Just, just food for thought.
Okay. So at this point, the city has no ideas, no plans, no. We're essentially just waiting until we actually own it before we start figuring out what we're going to do with it. And there's a lot of ideas in the pipeline, a lot of ideas. So putting yours in the pipeline is good, no, thank you. I appreciate that.
Jay, this is, should the city have the money and the budget identified for the purchase of property?
The initial agreement was forty-five thousand dollars to purchase the property. I think Ross mentioned earlier that there is money in the bank that's being amused, like four million. And I would imagine that we could potentially use some of that for the purchase of that property. Is that the vacant, what will be vacant lot and the house? That entire lot. And how, but how big is the lot of ballpark? I don't know. Maybe.
You can balance, start with the minus. If you dare.
I don't know.
Mayor, before we reiterate.
And are we done with the information for that?
We're done all the way to adjournment.
I just ready to go.
Yeah, okay. So great representative city, I guess. Given I've been working on a couple of things, we're having a lot written here of this fancy Nippon machinery. To make sure that this building is okay, so we'll be getting hopefully in a week. Some better results back to make sure that this building is okay with the end.
Oh, interesting. I'm curious what that says.
Yes, you should. Analysis.
Yeah, it is a safe to meet.
All right, that brings up what made me think of what we were talking about.
The empty property.
And another thing is we did a cost analysis for water and the ball of water that seems to be just like. No kind of can filtering out, so we're gonna, probably in your containers, because we're gonna get one of those like we have up front to put in here. For people to build their water.
Oh, perfect idea. So the water jug that they bring in and the water and you're getting water is probably water, sorry, not, no. Would you choose not to? Good night, sir.
Okay, for the records, we have against the same. But it's a cost analysis.
That would harder to paint in here. Those were very important, very important.
Next, one more item.
Yes, and the, you are invited to Carlton Farms to join us down for lunch. They're very grateful for our community and the leaders of service and would like to welcome you. To our facility, we consider it a privilege to operate in our community and would like to show you what we do every day. We hope you can join us for lunch to say thank you. And then on June twenty-third from twelve to thirty P M, you'll be out of school. Perfect today. Special motion, you get clean, make most of the good. Ross had a question real quick.
The answer is yes, I'm born here in the west, it's correct.
My question is for.
Okay.